Good evening and welcome to the July 26, 2017 ZBA meeting for the town of Merrimack. Will you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Rich, if you'd read the preamble, please.
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the Board deems appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this Board to grant a request. Minimum requirements are outlined in the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the Board to grant the request. The Chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the Speaker and the Board. Please be respectful of all in the interest of time, refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the Board for consideration this evening, but the Board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing and the Board will deliberate and vote on their request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers.
Thank you. Everyone who plans on speaking this evening, will you please stand up to be sworn in? Raise your right hand. Just trying to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the true self you got. Alright. A couple of housekeeping. The next ZBA meeting will be August 30, 2017. When you come up to testify, when you come up to speak on your petition, please make sure that you sign in, there's on the clipboard, and make sure that the light is bright green, not just, there's a green little light there, make sure it's bright green, that means your mic is on. And that is that. Oh, and Lenny, you're going to be sitting in tonight for Fran. You're welcome. Alright. First petition, Synergy Self-Storage LLC Petitioner/Owner variance under Section 2.02.7a7 of the zoning ordinance to permit an encroachment of pavement, fill and grading within 25, within the 25-foot wetlands buffer. The parcel is located at 403 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Ocrifer Conservation and Elderly Overlay, Elderly Housing Overlay Districts. A portion of the parcel is subject to the flood hazard conservation districts, tax map 4D-3, lot 084-01, case number 2017-25. If you just state your name and we're off.
Chris Ross, 403 Daniel Webster Highway.
Joel Sikala, 403 Daniel Webster Highway.
Alright, so what are we looking at tonight, gentlemen?
Can you guys hear me?
Alright. I don't know if anybody's familiar with this project, but this is about a four-year project that we undertook. Went through planning and zoning and crossed all our Ts and dotted all our Is. It was, it was a very large project. It was very strenuous and unfortunately, we had a small oversight and that's what brings us here today. We had a conversation during the process with the fire department to address, to seek out their comments on what they, what they would desire in this project. And their, their comments were that they wanted to see windows on the backside of the building on every floor, on each end. And they wanted us to eliminate the parking, this just so happens to still be here, but they wanted us to eliminate the parking that we had along the back of the building and here, against the end of the building because in case of a fire, those cars would be in the way. So we needed to relocate that parking. Additionally, they wanted to eliminate this dead-end zone here that Community Development, at the time, different staff, wanted to chop off at this point and leave this alone. But the fire department asked us to put a ramp in and put in an access road down to Wright Avenue so that they could exit out with a fire truck, you know, if need be. So we decided to put the windows in, put a door in that they asked for, relocate the parking, and put in the access road. But with everything going on, I'm not going to, you know, trying to make you guys understand, but with everything going on, with all aspects of the projects, understand that we were the GC, we had a ton of people to deal with. We missed some wording in the documentation and we did not come and get the necessary variance to do what we needed to do. So we addressed the fire department's concerns and we did not come back to the zoning board to get the variance that we need. So as you can see, our problem is, you'll see the wetlands right here outlined with these flag numbers here, so we're not encroaching the wetlands, I want to make that very clear. We're not encroaching any wetlands. The problem lies in this black shaded area because ultimately, this ramp has to be eliminated because in order to get that access road to come in, we have to put fill there and slope it down in order to get the fire truck down. But when the road comes down from this point here to this point here, we needed to encroach on the wetlands buffer. So that's what we're here tonight to ask is a waiver.
Alright, if you could just go over the five points, stop after each point in case we have any questions.
Sure.
And then go from there.
So addressing the five criteria, the first one in regards to public interest, before we, before we began improving the roadway that was there, it was a major eyesore, to be honest. We have, because of the, the situation of the, of the access road or that flag part of the lot, the, it's kind of in a low spot there, and the neighboring, the abutting property just up the hill, we're getting excessive sheet draining from their property and it was basically washing out the roadway. So we needed to stabilize that roadway somehow. So that was, in the nature of the public interest, it was just an aesthetic, from an aesthetic standpoint, that we addressed that. So that would be the...
Just read in the, just read in, there's five criteria, if you could just read in the criteria.
Okay, sure.
Just, and then, like I said, if we have any questions.
Okay, sure, sure. So as far as it's not being contrary to the public interest, that would be because it was from the aesthetic nature of that, that definitely dresses up that whole area, including the, the pavement we also added, and this is kind of ties in with the, with the item number four as well, so I'll just add that.
So basically, so let me just stop here. So granted the variance is public interest because of aesthetic improvements and access for emergency vehicles.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, number two. Just need to have them read into the, just for record.
Okay, sure, sure. Alright, so number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the variance is only to provide for improvements to an existing roadway that was already there and it only affects the minor portions of the wetlands buffer. It was kind of irregular shaped and we just ended up clipping off some of those high points of the, of the buffer there, as you can see.
Okay. Any questions? Please, Joe.
Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the greater portion of the affected area is due to the necessary fill required for the access ramp as Chris already mentioned, and to allow for the emergency vehicles and other traffic to get from the upper parking lot down. There was, before the ramp was put in, there was an elevation change of approximately about 12 feet. So even at a 10% grade, I mean, we're looking at considerable distance just, just to get the, the ramp in there. And again, the minor remaining area was just to kind of straighten that, that roadway out to get accessible, you know, out to Wright Avenue.
Okay. Any questions? Next.
Number four, the, for the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. And again, that's because of the improvements we did. Again, we started out with just a pretty much washed-out gravel, gravel roadway that every rainstorm, the sheet draining just made it worse and worse and we had to keep going there and repair it. So by, by putting a hard surface on there to prevent erosion, we also then put some, some fencing, security lighting and, and security cameras as well to help protect that area.
Questions? And number five?
Number five, unnecessary hardship owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because with the, the burden of the cost to install the ramp and, and make the improvements on the roadway, it's, it's unfair for us to have to bear that cost for essentially no, and get no benefit from it. So basically, what we did was, as Chris mentioned, we installed the ramp, put the, made the improvements to the road and we wanted to, to be able to utilize that, you know, to, to hopefully recoup some of that cost that we put in there.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to add that, you know, I know you guys don't like handouts during the meetings, but I've got, you know, some photos that I can show you of what we were dealing with before we, we did this roadway. I've got water that's just, it, the whole roadway is a river and I could show you.
No, and I appreciate that. All of us were on the board, I think, for the synergy zoning. I know I was when I, when we voted in the initial synergy going in. And I know that, I don't know, planning, you were probably involved with it as well, you know, Lenny and Tony, I think Richard was here as well. So we've all, we're all, or actually, I don't know, all of us are actually already familiar with that property, what it looked like before synergy and what it's looked like since. You know, so, yeah, I, I know, I appreciate what you're saying, but actually, no, it is a swamp.
It's a river. It was a river.
Yeah, yeah.
The water from RH White's old site sheets down his parking lot, it comes onto my driveway. It, it's a river going down to the low point and then it turns into a lake. So there's no way that any vehicle could get through that. I mean, it is, and I, like I said, I've got photos here.
No, I appreciate it. No, I appreciate it. Unfortunately, we can't, but, but I, we are familiar with what the property looked like prior and, and obviously, we've done our site visits prior to this, prior to this meeting, so we know the areas. Any other questions on number five? Actually, the second part of number five, if you could just put that into record, just so we could have that.
Sure. The proposed use is a reasonable one because if, if you're familiar, been on the board for a while, I'm sure you, most of you are familiar with, with Mr. Ross here, and you know that anything that he does kind of goes over the top and probably spends a lot more money than is necessary. So being able to utilize that roadway after all the expenses that were put into there, it's just, it's, it's a reasonable petition, I, we believe.
So long and the short of it, this, the only reason you're sitting here is because the fire department needs better access to that road?
No, what happened was, we had a, we had a site visit for a sign-off and the Community Development, which was a new team, basically did an inspection and told us that we've got something different from what the approved site plan shows. So nothing bad on them, their part, but it was a surprise to us because, again, it's a big project, it was an oversight, and we, he basically said, listen, I, I need you to go to zoning, so we're here.
Okay. Alright. Any, any questions from the Board? Lynn, any question? Lenny? Okay. I'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody who wants to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody who wants to speak against this petition? Alright, close the public hearing. Questions, comments from the Board? Discussion? Motions?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant Synergy Self-Storage LLC variance under Section 2.02.7a7 of the zoning ordinance to permit an encroachment of pavement, fill and grading within 25-foot wetlands buffer. Parcel is located at 403 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial, Ocrifer Conservation, Elderly Housing Overlay Districts. A portion of the parcel is subject to the flood hazard conservation district, tax map 4D-3, lot 84-01, case 2017-25. And that's with staff recommendations of the applicant shall obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the proposed paved access road and commercial use of the access road in order to rectify the violation of the approval previously granted.
Motion made by Rich, second.
I'll second.
Most seconded by Lynn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand. That is 5-0-0.
Thank you very much, guys, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. New Hampshire Science Petitioner and Global Companies LLC Owner variance under Section 17.10.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit a sign with a front setback of two feet whereas 20 feet is required and a sign of 52 square feet whereas a maximum of 32 square feet is required. Parcel is located at 468 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Elderly Overlay and Ocrifer Conservation Districts, tax map 5D-3, lot 125, case number 2017-26. Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Peter March from New Hampshire Science, 66 Gold ledge Ave in Auburn.
So what do we, why don't, can you give me a, give you just a, a quick 500-foot view of what we're looking at?
I didn't bring an easel, so...
That's okay, you can slide up to the mic and just explain, yeah.
I'll hold it up for you. This is a mobile gas station, as you're aware, 468 DW Highway. It's in a particularly difficult location in that it's on a corner. Setbacks are extremely limited. The existing sign is this one here.
Actually, you know what? I'm just going to have you sit, just so your mic picks it up, because I'm getting a, since I'm getting it picked up there.
The existing sign is this one here, which is a, probably a 20, 25-year-old example of a mobile ID sign for a gas station. It comprises two major parts, the price area and then what is called the peck tin or the actual logo sign at the top. I'm sure in your site visit, you noticed that this part has been damaged and has been hit. And this part actually overhangs the car park, the actual parking lot, by approximately two feet. The sign's been hit about twice in the last three years by trucks and the certain mixing. The lot is a relatively tight lot. It also no longer conforms to, no longer conforms to mobile specs, mobile brand image. Mobile has a program called Synergy, which is a new look to mobile sites, and they're trying to promote the Synergy brand within Mobile. It'll tie the three mobile gas companies together, i.e. Esso, Exxon and Mobile, and that's what that is. The other thing is that the On The Run has moved and Circle K has moved into that spot as a C-store brand, convenience store brand in that location. So what we're asking for is basically to take this sign and maintain the setback and increase it by somewhere around 15% in size to conform to the smallest possible stock mobile sign that we can put on our premises. So the changes would be, this sign has a center pole running up the center of the sign and it overhangs the, the pole on both sides, so it's equidistant, that's approximately eight foot wide, so it overhangs by approximately four feet. This sign has a pole on the one side of the sign, so it's a big 10-inch steel pole, powder-coated, and it basically, one of the benefits is it actually protects the sign because this side here would be the side of the car park. So anything hitting the sign would tend to hit the pole first and would, would basically, it would protect the outer signage. The other difference is that this is an LED price changer, which is a runoff, a remote control, something like a garage car opener, and it allows operators to change the digits from within the store. Or indeed, it can be networked and the digits can be changed through a network remotely, some remote location. That actually is allowed in town. So this, this particular thing is allowed. The variance we're asking for is on, on two fronts, and I apologize, some errors crept into the document that you have and I need to make sure that you understand that there are two things.
Tilt the mic down, towards your face. There you go, thanks. Yep.
There are two, there are two items that I'd like to address. The first thing is the size of the existing sign was called out at 49 square feet. In fact, it's 46 square, 45 square feet. So that is an error on the document that you have. The other error is we're asking for a two-foot setback, which is a setback of the existing sign, not either a one-foot setback, which is, and places called out on the document. So the variance we're looking for is basically to allow us a 52-square-foot sign where 45 was permitted, and also two-foot setback where two-foot was originally permitted when the sign was built.
So, alright, no, I get, I get, I get understanding of that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No problem.
As I say, why don't we have you read in the, the five points?
Yes, sir.
And then to stop after each in case there's any questions.
So the basis of the variance, firstly, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The portion of this, this portion of the test requires us to show that there'd be no harm to the public interest if you granted the variance. And for, to be contrary to public interest, it must be, it must unduly and to a marked degree violate the basic objectives of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance recognizes the purpose and aesthetics of signs, and 1701 basically says, "The purpose of this article is to encourage the effective use of signage to direct movement, advertise and to inform the public while protecting public safety, preserving the neighborhood character and minimizing visual clutter." As I've explained, the new sign differs from the old in two ways. It has LED price changers, but also the shape of the sign is different. Rather than having two sign cabinets, it has a single sign cabinet and it's rectangular as opposed to the old sign which has a sentimented pole. It is bigger, but it maintains the same colors, lights in essentially the same way and essentially the same intensity as the old sign. As I explained, the LED price sign simply replaces manual price changers. It's static at all times, it doesn't flash, and the only time it changes is to register a change in the gas price. The proposed sign replaces an old decrepit sign that, as I stated earlier, has been hit by vehicles on the forecourt several times the last three years, two, two to my knowledge. It's neater, newer, and will be much less likely to be damaged if hit. It'll have no adverse effect on the character of the area. Indeed, it's a new sign and that design will improve the appearance of the site over the old sign. In my estimation, the code and therefore the public has no interest, no interest in limiting businesses' ability to upgrade old signage to newer, better signage. It has an interest in improving signage and modernizing it so as to reduce clutter and improve effectiveness, and I would argue that the sign does both of those, both of those things.
Any questions? Number two, please.
The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. This requires that the effect of the variance be evaluated in light of the goals of the zoning ordinance, which might begin or end with a review of the premises on which the, the premises on which the ordinance is based, i.e. reducing clutter and promoting effective signage. The existing sign was approved in a site plan review when the site was originally built. Logically then, the planning authorities at the time considered the size appropriate for this location. The new sign offers an improvement of the original sign, which has become decrepit over the intervening years. It also maintains a setback. The spirit and purpose of the sign ordinance is called out above. The sign essentially that passes by is the same size as the existing one but offers clearer visibility, better, newer design and more effective communication.
Any questions? Number three?
Substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance. The size of the existing sign is 45 square feet and it was thus legal when it was built. Essentially, we have argued that the increase in size of the new sign is so small that few people, except maybe the very well-informed, would notice any visual difference between the existing sign and the proposed sign. The fact that the sign is pre-existing and non-conforming allows certain protections, including a modest increase in, in size. The new sign incorporates two panels not shown on the existing sign, Circle K and Synergy. As I explained earlier, Synergy is a new brand uplift from Mobile and it represents a global marketing campaign. Ultimately, this will involve a certain amount of forecourt, forecourt architecture designed to improve the customer's experience. The Synergy panel on the sign directs customers to this aspect. The sign has recently moved from On The Run to Circle K, a convenience brand that is well-known in the area. If the owner was forced to eliminate one of the two panels to bring the sign to 45 square feet, what are other of the panels above would have to be eliminated? Allowing the station not to, allowing the station to use a stock mobile sign and show the above, in our estimation, would be just and fair.
Questions? Number four, please.
The proposed use will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. The sign proposes new and more visually appearing, appealing, a big upon, and will replace an old damaged sign that's been hit several times. The approved mobile sign vendor has been unable to replace the price sign, that's the part that was hit, which was damaged recently by being hit by the truck with a like-for-like replacement. Thus, the site owner has been stuck waiting for some sort of replacement to replace that out of the mobile catalog of signs. Allowing to upgrade to a newer, more recognizable format would not result in a change in the essential neighbor, character of the neighborhood or harm to health, safety or welfare. We offer, we submit that this sign offers several benefits to stakeholders at the gas station and to the general public in general and cannot construed to be more, cannot be construed to be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming sign to the neighborhood. The top of the sign is 90, of the old sign is eight feet wide, the new sign is 75 inches wide, marginally over six feet. And although the sign is longer, it is less obtrusive. As concerns the LED price units, almost all new images from gas companies include these devices because they look cleaner and better than the old technology and do not age as quickly as manual prices do, particularly in this part, in this part of the world where the subject to ice secretion and, and damage from our cold climate.
Any questions? Number five, please.
Literal, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. The property is clearly unique in the area. The question is, can relief be granted without frustrating the purpose of the ordinance? We would argue that this property has several special conditions that distinguish it from neighborhood areas, neighboring areas and neighboring properties. Firstly, it has a legally non-conforming sign. The code calls it 32 square feet, the current sign is 45. It's a gas station and one of the key aspects with gas stations is the need to post prices on a regular basis and change prices, sometimes as much as once a day. The other key part of this property is that it's configured on a corner and it's such that the required setback is impossible to implement. If we were to implement the 10 feet, the sign would be somewhere under the gas canopy, so it would be a tough one to actually conform to the ordinance in that case. So we would argue that the special circumstances that relate to the property are unique enough that the same questions are unlikely to come in front of you again in this particular area and that the ordinance is probably not written to take account of the special situation that this gas station finds itself in. So in conclusion, we'd argue that the proposal is a reasonable one, it's not overly aggressive, and we'd argue that there's substantial public benefit to having it approved.
Okay. Any questions?
Quickly, the post.
Yes, ma'am.
For the new sign, is, are you planning on putting that in the existing location of the...
No, we need to move it closer to the, closer to the gas station itself. So to maintain the setback, the actual post, the post is justified.
So the sign, so the, I've got pictures, so the sign itself will be essentially where the sign is now, it's because the post will be closer to the station.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Alright. I'll open this up to the public. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Close the public hearing. Discussions, comments, motions?
Mr. Chair, real quick, if we could just...
Yes, sir.
On page two of my memo, I just wanted to point out, just for the applicant's benefit as they go to apply for sign permits, Section 2.02.13.1, 5.1, B... as they go to apply for sign permits, section 2.02.13.1, E.5.1. Sorry, that's not the right one. Where am I? Okay, there it is. Okay, section 17.10.3.1, I'm sorry, indicates that no ground sign may exceed in height the distance of any portion of the sign to the center of the adjoining public right-of-way. So I just want to make the applicant aware of that, because if they find that their sign will not comply with that section, then they're going to need to come back here in the future for another variance. That's all.
Do you understand what he's asking?
Yes, and the sign is 15 feet high. The center of the roadway is generously 33 feet away from it, so we're well within that. The other comment Mr. Price raised was the, he wanted the number of the road on the sign, so we've added it at the bottom there.
Excellent.
So.
Great, excellent. If there's nothing else from the board, questions, comments, discussion, motions? Lynn?
I'll move that we grant the variance under section 17 dot 10 dot 3 of the zoning ordinance to permit a sign with a front setback of two feet, whereas 20 feet is required, and a sign of 52 square feet, whereas a maximum of 32 square feet is required. Parcel is located at 468 DW Highway in the C2 commercial, general commercial, and the elderly overlay in Aquafor Conservation Districts. Tax map 5D hyphen 3, Lot 125, Case Number 2017 hyphen 26, subject to the two comments noted in the staff memo.
Second. Okay, Tony second, Lynn made the motion. Real quick, and I just want to make sure, you said that the numbers were not correct that were in this petition?
The, it was the setback numbers, so it was extremely hard to work out what the setback actually was, so we adopted the town's view of setback. We've just been back and checked it, and the current sign is setback at two feet.
Problem is, is that we're okay for the petition once it's approved? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, 5-0-0. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
It's a much nicer-looking sign.
Yes, it will be. Next, Chris Payne, petitioner, and Scott and Renee Kavanaugh, and Eleonore Zvaquen, owners, variance under section 3.0, Zvaquen, sorry, owners under, my French is not good tonight, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot line adjustment including Lot 042-022, which results in a lot containing approximately 144.14 feet of frontage on Kramer Hill Road and Lot and 91.89 feet total of 236.03 feet of frontage on Greenleaf Street, whereas 250 feet is required. Parcel is located at the R Residential District, tax map 2A, Lot 042-022, Case Number 2017-27. Good to see you, Attorney Michael.
And good to see you, folks. I thought I'd come down, and I just wanted to come to Merrimack and.
The best for last.
Say hello to the zoning board. It's kind of an interesting case. The planning board has actually approved this lot line adjustment. When we talk lot line adjustment, let me show you what I mean. The lot that was in existence is the yellow that you see here, kind of to the pink. The balance of it was the rest of the lot. And part of this has a history, because Greenleaf Street wasn't around forever. That really only comes into existence into the, I think, the mid, what, 2009, I believe. And this, this area had been, in fact, you granted a variance, a frontage variance for this area along Kramer Hill Road back in 96. So this thing has a history. This particular plan, we believe, improves the entire outlook. And by that, I mean, we've got Greenleaf Street here. Greenleaf Street serves as a much better access to this lot. So what we've done is revised the lot line and created a larger lot. It used to be 3.1 acres, and now it's, I've got my numbers here someplace, I'll give it to you. 4.78, I believe, is the new one, and the balance is 5-point-something. So we're talking about two fairly large parcels. These are not small areas that we're talking about. And the idea here is instead of using the Kramer Hill Road frontage, which in fact, the planning board next, they said, you're not going to use that if this is approved. We want you to use Kramer Hill, Greenleaf, it's a much better, safer access to this parcel. So the, the theory, or I should say, the reason we're here is a frontage variance is it relates to 4222, I believe, which is the, which is the new lot that we're talking about in question. We think it meets the standards for variance. We think this makes sense, but it needs zoning board approval to make it work. As I say, the planning board approved this, I believe it was on June 10th. I'm not going to beat this to death any further. Mike will take you through the five criteria, and we hope that the board can assist us with this to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll try not to beat it to death either. Starting with the five points, interrupt, and I'll pause after each one. Number one, granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Here, as the courts have said, and as you all know, to be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance, such that it violates its basic zoning objectives. Here, the primary purpose of minimum frontage requirements is to ensure appropriate and safe access to lots. The proposed reconfigured lot would have approximately 91 feet of frontage along Greenleaf, which is more than adequate to provide safe access for a residential lot. Access from Greenleaf is actually preferable, as Attorney Michael noted, from an engineering perspective, as it provides for a more level grade access, and it avoids having to traverse up and down the steeper slopes toward Kramer Hill. Also, as noted, this application's already gone through, through some vetting with the planning. In fact, the planning board approved this contingent on zoning approval in part. Moreover, the variance, it simply allows for a small portion of one of the lots to be adjusted. The request is not contrary to the character of the neighborhood. You know, there's two lots, we're seeking two lots, just an adjusted lot line. So in light of the above, this request does not conflict with the purpose of the ordinance or its basic zoning objectives, and granting the requested relief will not be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions?
I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer this. Are we combining these lots in the hope of a development, or do we know? I mean, I, I know it's not, I know it's not silly, so I'm just kind of curious as to why the lots are being combined. I may be, I missed when you.
They're not being, they're not being combined. We have two lots now. This lot and this lot.
Right.
We're adjusting the lot line, the blue. We still have two lots, we're not creating another lot. We've got two now, we're going to end up with two, but more equal in size, and instead of using Kramer, we're using Greenleaf for access.
They're pulling, they're pulling space off of the big lot.
Correct.
And giving it to the small one.
Correct.
So that you can access from Greenleaf.
Okay, all right. My misunderstanding that.
Now, what happens in the future, I, you know, someone wants to build a road in there, that's, that's, that's not the topic of discussion tonight.
No, 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 and I'm not saying it is. I guess I misunderstood what you were saying, and I was just looking for clarification, that was all.
And thank you. Thank you for asking the question.
All right, number two, I'm sorry.
Sure. So as you all know, the number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, and this, this discussion is very similar to the point we just talked about, so it's somewhat redundant. Again, the rationale for minimum frontage is to provide safe access to lots. Here, because of the unique orientation of the property, the proposed lot reconfiguration will actually have frontage on, on both Kramer Hill and Greenleaf, and it can provide safe ingress and egress from the adjacent Greenleaf with more reasonable grades. The proposed new lot configuration is going to be consistent with the character of the existing neighborhood, as we just sort of highlighted. There, there are two lots existing, and we're not proposing any new lots, just a reconfigured lot line, a portion of a reconfigured lot line at that. As such, the spirit of the ordinance, which ultimately seeks to promote health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the town, is observed in the requested variance.
Any questions? All right, number three?
Actually, do you have a question?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm just trying to understand this. So in the, in the current, in the current state, before the lot line adjustment, the property, the larger property, has 291 square feet of frontage on Greenleaf?
Yes.
So this drops that to 200.
Correct, correct, and that's conforming. That's a conforming law.
Oh, okay.
That's a conforming law. Yes, it does, it's moderate soil, so it's 200, not 250.
Ah, okay, so that was my question.
Is that, that, yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious.
That, that's the reason for the distinction. I know it's close together, but that distinction is because of soils.
Ah, okay, thank you.
So the technical relief is just a variance as to the lot on the left for the frontage, because the right lot is conforming completely.
Thank you much.
So moving on to point three, unless I'm interrupted.
Nope.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice. Here, substantial justice is done when the loss of denying the variance exceeds the gain to the general public, instructively enforcing the ordinance. In this case, denying the requested variance will not result in an appreciable gain to the general public, given that the proposed lots are, the proposed reconfigured lot is designed to ensure safe and appropriate use, and that request does not seek to add another lot, simply change the driveway location to a more level grade. The proposed lots will be used consistently with the district's permitted uses and in line with the surrounding neighborhood. Furthermore, the proposed lots will not threaten public health, safety, or welfare. Contrastingly, in the balancing test, denying this application will result in a substantial loss to the applicant by preventing a safe and reasonable use of the property, and in effect, requiring access from an elevation that would need use and maintenance of a sloped driveway on Kramer Hill. In doing so, the loss of denying the variance greatly exceeds any public gain in warrants granting this application.
Questions?
Point four, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The proposed lot will be used in a manner consistent with these neighboring lots, and thus should not produce different or significant traffic noise, odors, or other detrimental impacts to the surrounding area. As such, the requested variance will not diminish the character of the neighborhood, and neither the surrounding property values.
Number five.
Point five, unnecessary hardship. So due to the special conditions of the property that distinguish this piece of land from the others in the area, denying this variance would result in unnecessary hardship, because there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the frontage provisions of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to this property. Here, we have a unique piece of property, as indicated on that plan, the shape is unique one, the topography is unique in the sense that we can get a flatter grade to Greenleaf, and the orientation frankly is the, what I see is the truly unique aspect of this, because we can have a better means of ingress and egress to a public way. So, so taking a step back, the purpose of minimum frontage is to ensure safe access. And here, this request seeks access from Greenleaf Street with 91, approximately 91 feet of frontage from more reasonable grades. So this proposal is more than adequate to support a residential driveway and related infrastructure. Moreover, it's important to note that, again, we're not adding another lot here, we're simply looking to adjust a small portion of an existing lot line, which the planning board's already conditionally approved. As such, there's no substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance's minimum frontage requirement and the application to the property at issue. The second piece of that is just that this is a proposed, the proposed use is reasonable, because it contemplates a use that's permitted under the ordinance and residential use.
Any final questions? Thank you. Anybody that'd like to speak in favor? Anybody that'd like to speak against? Is there anything that you gentlemen would like to add in closing?
No.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion, motion?
Quick clarification.
Clarification.
This has already been approved by planning board, subject to getting this variance tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we grant the variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot line adjustment, including Lot 042-22, which results in a lot containing approximately 144.14 feet of frontage on Kramer Hill Road and 91.89 feet, total of 236.03 feet of frontage on Greenleaf Street, whereas 250 feet is required. Parcel is located in the R Residential District, tax map 2A, Lot 42-22, Case Number 2017-27.
Okay, motion made by Lynn, second.
Second.
Seconded by Rich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
5-0-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, folks.
Moving right along. Anything we need to discuss, community development?
The only thing I have to point out is the annual meeting is next month, and that is when you will do the election of officers and your by-law review.
So what else besides the election of officers?
By-law review.
By-law review.
Are there anything in particular we need to know about the by-law review? I take it since.
There's, there's nothing that's come up over the past year that, at least nothing that I can remember.
Well, there's the Adu change, but that's about it.
Well, that's, that's a state law change, but I'm thinking anything on ours that we've mentioned before, I'm sure you would have made notes. No, okay.
And I take it, with the exception of Rich, who couldn't make the meeting, Lynn and Lenny, you're both sworn in and.
Yes.
Ready to go. All right. Minutes for June 28th. The one you were on vacation for. The hearing to sit and, did you talk to them two Monday, last Monday?
No, interview.
The interview?
Yeah, okay.
Did you go for the interview?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're on the same page.
All right, good. All right, so back to minutes, June 28th, 2000.
I move we approve this petition.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
And so that is 244-01, with Lenny abstaining. Just reading this thing here. And Tony?
Make a motion to adjourn.
No.
Okay.
To where?
Second.
Seconded, motion made by Tony, seconded by Lynn. Thank you very much, have a good night.